That's the only good thing.
It'll be here before it dies.
Hmm?
It'll be here before it dies.
Test.
I know, but I don't like to think about that either.
Yes, we are meeting our webcam now. So.
That's the one that.
Yeah, come up and, yeah, you're familiar with it.
I've seen it before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So getting it trained.
The only thing that's negative about it is that if like, if several people start talking at the same time, or like clapping from the audience or something, it just mutes out and then you don't hear. So that might be something to like stress. Only one person talks at a time. Otherwise they will mute out the, the entire conversation instead of try to. That's one thing I've noticed with Harrisburg and Beersford your vault season.
AI can't keep up.
He's spazzing out.
Uh, we stopped after a while. Now, now it looks like it's a good thing.
So how long?
But this is just a, my father says, the last time he was raised, his elbows were full of flags.
Yeah.
They start.
Yeah.
Two, three days.
Geez, what are you kidding me?
Yeah.
This isn't a game of plays, it's the King of Flags. It was, my God.
I went almost like twenty, twenty-four weeks. When, cause I do how many people.
Two, three.
Oh, they do.
Oh, so. And they have a gap. This one they don't have that much of a gap.
They'll keep up with the record anyway. Yeah. Yeah, but most touchdowns by T. Poindexter.
Yeah.
And next weekend, when they're playing the Colts, I hope it's not the same situation down here.
So that's, I was just gonna, for. It was that, or, cause then Hunter, Hunter.
Hunter, yep. It's an option.
For what?
I mean, the last.
Cause obviously they're gonna take all their own.
Yeah, so like you and Minnie Haha.
I can, I can see this growth accountable. You know?
Seven o'clock, boss. Is it? It is, we call a meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second? Sorry.
Can we go roll?
Commissioners Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Mayor Luntzer.
Aye. Okay, uh, next, are there any visitors to be heard tonight on items that are not on the agenda? So you can come to the podium and get five minutes station name and address.
Could I do attitude next week's agenda?
Pardon?
Could I do attitude next week's agenda?
Yeah. For what do you need?
Oh, I have some questions.
You can meet with staff.
Hmm?
You can meet with staff first and then find out if we, need to push something.
What staff do I have to new with?
What do you wanna talk about?
I have some questions concerning a new code enforcement.
Sure, yeah.
And existing codes.
I can meet with you.
Okay. One.
You get your contact information when you get back to your seat.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Okay, we'll move forward with our old business. Um, we'll have a second reading of the supplemental appropriation ordinance. Um, the ordinance had its first reading on November third. In order not to exceed the original appropriation, the city will need to make some adjustments to the budget throughout, through a supplement. These are items that were not originally budgeted, but were carried over from the 2024 or had city commission approval. General fund total is one million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars. And if passed, publishing will take place on November twenty-sixth and effective on December seventeenth.
Yeah.
So motion and second is required for this.
Make the motion to approve and authorize mayor to sign, have it published.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, okay, can we go roll?
Commissioners Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Mayor Luntzer.
Aye. And we'll have a second reading on the ordinance amending the water and sewer rates. Um, ordinance was first read on November third. This ordinance includes amendments to the water rates for the second year increase relating to the South Lincoln Real Water. Bulk rate, bulk water rate increase that had initially not been passed on to us after, after the contract was first signed. South Lincoln Real Water has agreed to break the increase over two years. The first increase was incorporated in 2025. And the second increase to be incorporated in 2026. This ordinance also includes updates to sewer rates and addition of separate water rate for services outside of city limits. If passed, the publication will take place on November twenty-sixth and effective, be effective on December seventeenth. The rate would take effect on January first bill, which includes water usage from November twentieth through December twenty-second. And this requires motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we go roll?
Commissioners Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Mayor Luntzer.
Aye. Okay, um, let's move on to new business. Um, it's been recommended to hire Ryan Bates as a part-time police officer at thirty-one seventeen an hour. Our motion is second required to approve or deny this hire.
What are we hiring a part-time for?
Uh, help with people wanting to exercise their vacation. So they're, they're only used in lieu of someone else making overtime, quite frankly.
How do we handle them right now?
People are in overtime or they switch shifts. This gives them another option. It doesn't mean that it'll happen. You know, he's gonna be working, I believe, nights with the county now. Um, so he wouldn't be able to cover a night shift most likely, but he's a glutton for punishment, he might take a day shift here if someone's looking to get time off and someone else isn't able to switch. Cause right now as it is, if someone wants to use their vacation, someone else, we, we don't have any part-time on the books right now. Someone else is gonna switch with them or earn overtime and work double. At this time, do we have guys working double?
Yeah.
So the, the current part-time roster has two guys on it. Um, Mark Spindling and who is a full-time TPD officer and Tim Westling who resigned. He switched to part-time. Um, the last time that we had a part-time officer work was long enough to where Officer Westling's cert is going to expire because he doesn't have enough hours in. So with this, with Ryan resigning, going to the county, him swapping to part-time spot, it's basically a leeway for us to kinda help with that transition period. Because obviously opening up the spot, having that time for applications to come in, then the training, the interviews, that takes a long time. So him being able to fill in as a person on the part-time roster will just help alleviate that stress.
But he would also stay on the roster.
He would also stay on the roster and work when available, yes.
So you haven't used your part-timers because everything's working well?
We haven't used part-timers because when we do have stuff go through, that's who it goes to first and they are as available fill-ins, right? Um, so unfortunately, they haven't been available. That's what we'd like to do. Ryan says that he will make himself available, especially like I said during this transitional period. So I'd like to use him as much as I can. That's where, that's where we sit. It's as available guys that come in. Obviously, I spoke to Officer Van Leeen. He has all the overtime in the world in T. So he doesn't fill in as mu- as much as he can, probably can, because he'd rather go work that, right? Make way more, you know, fifteen dollars more an hour doing that. So it is a first come as available basis.
How much overtime have we had in this year?
I don't know, we're under, I mean, we're under budget, so we're under budget as far as our, uh, uniform services go. So I don't know exactly the amount of hours. I couldn't tell you that, Kyle's not here. We could get a expert.
Use federal grants to cover some of that.
We do use federal grants, um, we do use the OHS grant. Um, so when guys come in, they have those spare hours, they can work highway safety and write tickets. Um, and then that can be brought back. So, and that, we get seven thousand, I granted seven thousand dollars for that this year and the upcoming year. So that's available until October of 2026. So again, this is just him swapping over to part-time to help fill that void and then hopefully we can keep him on shifts. It helps when we have the events in town. Um, you know, Civil War days to come in when we want another officer, the car show, when we want another officer to fill in, so we're not paying overtime during that timeframe. But other than that, he is zero liability to the budget unless he works.
Budget, I mean, people think it's, if it's on the budget, we gotta spend it or we can spend it.
Right.
A budget is nothing but an estimate because it's done a year ahead of time.
Yep.
So.
And the police department's been under budget for the last three years, you know, or at least every year since I've been here. We've been, we've come under budget, so. That's where we, we don't, uh, we don't try and use it to burn it, so. And that's why it's good to have him on staff, cause he doesn't, he doesn't do anything unless he works. Is there any other questions on it?
Motion to approve. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? This is for a part-time position, it's not a full-time position, it's for a part-time in case we need him in case of emergencies. It was gonna make the second, then we will have to. Come on. Okay. Moving on. We need direction on advertising for the full-time police officer position vacated by Ryan Bates. Motion and second is required to advertise for this full-time position.
Corbin, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we don't hire this individual, what kind of overtime hours are they looking at potentially?
I mean, like, we, we try to fill in as much as we can, I fill in as much as I can, but I mean, it always adds up, I guess. I don't know the exact numbers again for the overtime. That's a Kyle question, but I would say that it would go up.
If we don't fill this position, you can adjust schedules so that we have just one less officer on during shifts?
As far as one less, well, we have one day and one night guy. So we will always have one day and one night guy, just like we have now. So we'll have twenty-four, seven coverage with one and one, so.
And then yourself is on during the day and the SRO is on during the day.
And the SRO is under, which is paid by the school, he's in the school one hundred percent of the time.
And then we have a floater in the middle, right?
No, we don't. Nope, no floater.
Nope.
You know, on somebody that's working like.
Nope, we didn't, we do not have.
Seven officers, so.
Yep.
Trying to figure out how that, that doesn't really add up in the schedule then.
You're right, it doesn't, because we have one day guy, one night guy for two shifts. So that's four. We have Ryan who's in this, or not Ryan, sorry, Travis who's in the school, paid by the school, and then myself. And then we're missing that last guy. He's the guy that we're gonna be hiring, right, for our swing shift. To have that swing shift. Granted, we've only been full staff thirteen percent of this year, so like I said, it takes time to hire, to train, academy, all that is in, you know, that's eight months, so.
So the guy that just came through academy, what's his shift?
He is the night shift, he will be replacing Ryan.
So he'll be the full-time, all-time, only night guy?
Yes, ma'am.
So what is your shift, like three days on, three days off, two, three?
Two, two on, two off, three on, two off, two on, three off.
So who's the other night guy?
Uh, well, that spot is Josh, but he's gonna be going to the academy on Monday. So Hunter, Officer Ray will be going to the night shift. And then we're gonna be pulling the school officer to day shift. So Travis will be going to days.
And what happens if the school were to need Travis when he's on during the days?
Here, we'll go to the school, we'll go to the school as much as we can again. It'll be a, we'll go to the school when we need to, um, every time, so. But we'll be paying his salary.
We'll be paying his salary then.
We'll be paying his salary when he's, when he's running, yeah, when he's running shift, when he's out of school. So from, no, no school hours, we'll be paying that, that's not gonna be something that's reimbursed.
Schools here run from what to what? What month to what month?
August to May.
Um.
August to May.
So on August to, to May, the last full year, what was the amount that the school reimbursed us for?
Off the top of my head.
Give me a rough estimate.
We'd be getting his eighty hours.
Eighty-four hours.
Yeah. Times whatever.
Times at least, he's making probably what, around thirty dollars an hour? So what does that come out to be? Have I got their calculator? See a lot of.
See, we get reimbursed for his hours, his hours, his full-time, yeah. But only during those nine months.
So on average, that's.
Twenty-five, twenty.
Twenty-five hundred dollars, so times two paychecks a month, five thousand. Nine months, so that's forty-five thousand dollars that we get reimbursed from the school. Rough estimate.
And his total package? Retirement and everything, car, uniforms, everything is roughly how much? Eighty-five thousand?
For those additional three years after that? Or three months?
No, the whole time. His total, his whole paycheck, including retirement, is how much? Not just his paycheck, how much is the city putting away for retirement, to uniforms, matching unemployment, everything, is that, that package number is what? Eighty-five thousand?
Possibly, uh, so you're saying, if we're saying that nine months is forty-five, then what would that, an additional fifteen under there? Um, so that's sixty. And then probably, I would say to outfit somebody from start to finish when they first get hired on, is about two thousand dollars, you know, between vests and, and, uh, um, equipment. So, you know, what are you, what are you looking at, like?
You went through this already.
Seventy-five.
We're not, we're not giving the whole package amount of a police officer, police officer from start to finish.
Right, so the city matches what, eight percent for the retirement?
PPD, is it eight?
Yep, eight percent, so you're adding an additional eight percent onto that sixty. So we'll round that up to six thousand to ten percent. So there's six thousand for the retirement. Um, and then there's another five hundred dollars a month for health insurance, I would assume. That's what, what does that come out to be a year, another six thousand? So you're at eighty-five thousand, so yeah, sure, we'll go with eighty. The school pays for forty-five of that.
So when we say that the school is paying his salary for more, pretty much the nine months, that's very much me. Cause nine months out of twelve, that's three quarters.
Okay.
Should be three quarters of eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand, which is far more than eighty, forty-five thousand, so. The, the school is reimbursing us for the tip of the iceberg.
Sure. Yep.
Is where I'm going with this.
Right, and they're very generous with their reimbursement, because there are, uh, I don't know anybody else in the county that the school district reimburses the police department for their SRFs.
And I'll say it because I said it in our, in our meeting. If the population of Canton, three thousand people.
Yep.
Are paying the forty thousand that's left. While the school is, runs all the way down to Fairview, maybe even Hudson, up to Spring Creek.
I don't know where the district goes, but I will tell you that when the school calls, when we, when they're not reimbursing us, we're gonna answer anyways. So having them reimburse us for having a guy there, um, regardless when we get there or not, um, that's one of those deals where we're gonna go there when they call no matter what. So we can, we can remove him and not have any reimbursement and go anyways. Cause that, that's what's gonna happen. Anytime they, anybody calls the police department, we're gonna answer.
Okay, a question that came from the citizen of Canton. Fifteen years ago, we did it with four people, how can we not cover it with six?
I, I'm, I couldn't tell you, I know that we, like I, we talked about before, you know? We're sitting at quite a few calls for service, you know, things grow. As far as the danger in the city, you know? We talked about this in our meeting together, um, so.
And another thing that maybe some of the people, the citizens of Canton don't even know is we hired a code enforcement now, which is the salary of what? Tiffany?
I'm not sure on that, do you know?
Cause it's an hour.
Code enforcement used to be in the police department. And I just look in this book right here for the meeting, our sales tax are up four point three percent. But we have added way more than four point two percent to our expenses of the year, of the whole, whole time.
Sure.
So if we don't turn something around, whoever's sitting in this in the next five to ten years, we've got a lot of questions to answer.
Are we, are we in a, Tiffany, are we, are, are we in a deficit?
I don't believe so.
I just, um, I mean, these, these positions are budgeted.
All I'm talking about is where we are today to where we're gonna be in five to ten years. If we're not adding, if we're not keeping up with income according to expenses, I've been business long enough, you're, you're gonna be in trouble. You don't have the cushion that you have now if you ain't gonna strain that out. I don't care what business you're in.
Do you have any idea how Lennox is gonna pay for their SRO?
Um, I don't, I couldn't tell you exactly, I know that, uh, Chief Erickson is budgeted for it. Um, it doesn't sound like the school district is gonna pay for anything, having private conversations with him, so. Like I said, they treat us very nicely.
So we had the, this letter that went out to all the citizens and they were able to fill it out and respond.
Yep.
And I read through all of them, every single one that got returned, and I would say a huge majority of those responses said one thing, and that was to reduce the police budget. Um, reduce the police force. And I obviously am married to a police officer, I totally back the blue. Uh, but I also know that we were elected by the citizens and they're telling us, they're pretty adamant about it, in fact, there were some that were extremely colorful language on what they thought about it. And, um, I just feel like we'd be remiss if we completely, we asked for their opinion and then we just completely ignore it. And I struggle because obviously I am pro-police, hundred percent. I feel like we would be, we would be remiss if we lost our police force in town. I, I hundred percent believe we should have a police force in town. But like I said, I'm trying to figure out why we have so many officers when the city has not grown. I don't, I see calls for service, I don't think they're excessive. You know, and I just feel like I would hate to be up here not listening to what people are screaming at us to tell us to do. Um, so I'm just really trying to do what's best and also to the people that are asking us to do this job.
Well, what I, what I would, uh, you know, I would counter argument there is, how many letters did we have returned?
Three hundred and fifty.
So what? Little over than ten percent of the population? So you, you, you're gonna base your judgment on what, fifty percent of ten percent of the population that returned their letters?
More than fifty percent.
Seventy-five percent? So of the ten percent that returned their letters?
Well, I can't ignore those people either.
We're all sitting up here for twenty-five percent to turn on and vote.
Right. Like one by one.
Boy, that's sad.
So, eh, I mean, we, the people who speak are the people that obviously get listened to.
I'll make the motion, do you know either or? Hey, everybody.
There's no such thing as a motion in the negative. Sorry, well, there's motions in the positive.
My position is not to delete the position. But let's let's not fill the position at this time. I may be trying to figure out.
So what's gonna happen, Corbin, when, um, Josh is at, uh, trying to get certified, goes to class, and what happens if we lose somebody else?
Then we'll be down one, um, again, we'll be down two, um, and then we'll be back here. Again, this is not, the, the start to finish is not a month or two turnaround, you know? From start to finish is eight months, you know? Um, Josh was hired last February, he is just now going to the academy. So he won't even be certified, it's gonna be over a year, uh, because he'll graduate the academy in March. So it's not, it's not something that, uh, that is a quick turnaround. By the way, and, and I mean, if you guys want to, if you're worried about that portion, you know, we can always list it as a certified position only. And we'll only take certified applicants, but you're really, really lowering the pool of applicants at that point.
When we, when we do put out, have you seen certified applicants come through?
Yes, yep, we have, so.
I'm, just from my timeline here, I've noticed that the officers that come on, we, we sent up here.
Yep, I mean.
We haven't had many.
Uh, in, in our current, um, department, let's see, I mean, we have Hunter who was a, he went to. Uh, in, in our current, um, department, let's see, I mean, we have Hunter, who was a, he went to the academy. Um, Trav came as a certified guy. Bates came as a certified guy. Conley came as a certified guy. But again, Bates and Conley both started as part timers, so we don't have that part-time roster anymore. That turnaround has come because they've become full-time guys. So, and then obviously Robert and Joshua, both are going to the academy.
How long can somebody be off the troll before getting certified?
They have that one-year window. One year, yep. The only problem with that one-year window is if you send them, if you let them work that full year and then they go to the academy and something goes wrong, they get hurt, um, they fail a test, something like that, then they're not allowed to go back and then they come back and they can't work, so. And again, with this hiring period too, with all the holidays as well, it's just gonna extend even longer.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Okay, that's gonna lack a second. Congratulations.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Next on the agenda is the health insurance rates. Um, the city budget of fifteen percent. For a rate increase of premiums for city staff in the 2026 budget. After getting the final numbers, the proposed 2026 rate increase is six point eight seven percent. The plans are through the current agent, Jordan Volk, and are staying with well-marked. If anything else you wanna add to this?
There are otherwise, the plans are staying the same. Uh, and we've, we've also been talking with, we've, we have a number of employees that are on the city health insurance, but not utilizing yet. We're asking them to, if they're not utilizing to get off of it. It wastes our money and oftentimes ends up with wasting your own money because if you're covered by your spouse, your spouse's insurance will still mandate that you utilize your separate insurance if you have it before coming back to their insurance, so, um, yeah. Had that discussion recently with both. Okay? But wasn't least surprised by what it went on by.
And others, really, it'll compare to what you're gonna hear. Motion approved.
A motion to have second?
Second.
In call roll?
Commissioners York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Mayor Leunstrum.
Aye. Next is the closing on Friday after an observed holiday on a Thursday. Being recommended, recommended to change the process of personnel manual to state that the city closes as an entity on a Friday when it falls after an observed city holiday on a Thursday. The employee can either use accrued vacation time or take the day unpaid. Motion is required to approve the closing of the Friday when it falls after an observed holiday on a Thursday with employees taking the day either unpaid or using their own vacation time.
I think it's pretty clear, um, every year it's gonna vary a little bit. Next year, we're only do one holiday where this would kick into effect. But to reiterate, we're not asking for vacation or paid leave. People either use their own vacation or go without pay.
What are we trying, what are, what are we changing? What are we trying to change to where it is now?
So, um, is Christmas on a Friday or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, right, yeah, the next item.
So you got Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's all coming on. So what, what, however, if we don't change anything, what, what's going on?
If we change nothing, we're gonna be out on Christmas Day and need to come back on Friday before a weekend. So we'll have a day off, we'll come back to work for a day, and then we'll go back into the weekend. Where, so then we have, you know, numerous people trying to use their vacation to leave, but we're having to deny it so that we can maintain operations. Whereas if we can just agree that we're closed, then everybody that wants to use their vacation to get paid for the day can and they can leave to go, um, on extended trips with their family or, or what have you. Cause it's, you know, I don't think it's so much the people who aren't traveling for the holiday that want to be gone on those Fridays. It's this, the folks that are trying to take a trip back home or, or wherever with their family that really wanna be out on those Fridays.
What would you say is the majority of people that are, like, is it fifty percent of our employees are asking?
Yeah. Now, both city hall and public works lumped together.
Here's what I don't, I don't like about, about this. Thursday and Friday, Thanksgiving's already in the manual. They already get that. So we're only talking about any other happenstance Thursday holiday. So like for me personally, sick leave and vacation leave are a rarity in my life because I have children and one that is, uh, has special needs, which we are gone a lot for various appointments. Um, or to, so for me to be told you have to take this day off and you have to use your own vacation time or you go unpaid, I would be, I would not appreciate that as employee. Um, like that would be like, really, you're forcing me to take the day off and you're forcing me to pay myself out of my own vacation, which can be, you know, some of us really need our vacation time, um, for other things. So I don't know, I just, I feel like I don't like this. Um, I feel like it's forcing an employee into doing something they have no choice. Um, and I don't, and I don't like that, um, to say, we're closed, you gotta pay yourself. So where I'm going with that is we're talking about on the next one, but every year the governor says if the holiday lands on a Thursday or whatever, the governor always says, we're gonna give the state these days off. And then we come to the commission and the commission decides whether or not we wanna go with that plan. So I feel like that's already working for us. We're already doing that when it comes up and we decide to do that. And then they get holiday pay, um, versus being forced to use their own vacation time. I would prefer to go that route, um, where we decide, yep, and we'll pay you versus we're not gonna pay you, but you can't be here either. I don't know, that does not, that doesn't sit right with me. I'd rather, I'd rather go with the next thing, which is decide we're gonna stick with the state and give them the Friday off paid by our pockets versus having to dip into their own. I just, I don't know. That's how I feel about it.
I'm sure the staff would most certainly like to not have to use their own vacation, but every governor holiday has been denied since, since last year. So this was the staff trying to strike a balance with the, the commission. That, for example, if you pass this one, then on the governor's thing, that you don't be granting one of the two holidays that the governor's granted, trying to split the baby.
I mean, I hear tonight that we're making the city people come back for one day and then it's the weekend again. I don't know where everybody works. It's hard on that and my complaint about them. As long as I had to come back today after, I don't care if it landed on a Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Friday, I came back the next day. You know, we're not into Christmas yet. Last year, we gave them half, half a day off on Christmas Eve. So they're out of there by noon. They had Christmas off and they're back to school, they're back to work the next day. Every normal job, you go down Main Street, come back and there are the bottom guards. Everybody's doing the same thing. So I don't, I don't think we need to hear a poor old me that I'm working for the city and I gotta come back for one day.
I, I don't think it's a poor old me idea. Again, we're getting people trying to use their own vacation to take that day off. And I either gotta deny half of them to stay open or not be open.
I mean, we can work on a skeleton crew, right? Like on a holiday. I mean, it's not like we need a full staff.
How skeleton are you comfortable going?
Well, that's June nineteenth. We have two out of five in, at work, so, in the city hall.
Didn't you dent like that?
No. But hopefully one of the top three are there to at least answer emergency calls. We have three, six in the total water and street. And I don't think it's too much to ask for is three out of six to be at work. One of them being salary. Again, every, every business up and down the street's gotta do the same thing. I hear what Sarah's saying. I mean, somebody just starting out, they can't afford to give eight hours of their pay.
I never looked at it the way Sarah mentioned it. And then when she said that, it makes total sense to me. That's not how I looked at it. Now I completely understand that. I wouldn't wanna take it for me either. So I'm looking at the Christmas holiday and it's like, have them work till noon on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, give them the twenty-fifth off and expect them to come back Friday. Didn't mean to jump on you there.
I guess I'm not sure what kind of motion you need for letter D.
It sounds like there's a lack of emotion.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which pertains to holidays. Governor Roden has declared the state government offices closed on Wednesday, December twenty-fourth, and Friday, December twenty-sixth, in observance of Christmas, and has granted eight hours of administrative leave each day. A personal manual states that we don't have to go along with that. We could do whatever we want. So a motion is required to decide what we wanna do with the Christmas holiday.
Make a motion that we work Wednesday till noon, have Thursday off, and work Friday.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from anyone? Okay, you can call roll.
Commissioners Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Mayor Leunstrum.
Aye. Okay, um, manhole adjustments. First, do you wanna address this for us?
Sure can.
Okay, good.
Hi, in front of you guys, there is a quote to complete some manhole adjustments. So we did an inventory through town based on some feedback, uh, just to get some of those adjusted. So what we did, there was approximately thirty throughout the city. We identified essentially two corridors that would have some efficiency on the construction side. That got us to about ten manholes. So those are on Cedar and Third Street. Uh, total cost for that is approximately, call it ninety-two hundred bucks, uh, to get those manholes. Uh, working in some other communities, doing some similar work. What they're gonna do is make a box out on those, raise those up with some adjusting rings and pour back on concrete to get those nice and level with the surface around there. So, um, we did reach out to a few others. This was, uh, the one proposal that we got. Um, unless weather really changes on us, I'd anticipate most of this work being completed in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. So just due to some of the temperatures and stuff, if we do get that warm spell, they may be able to come in and knock those out. Uh, work won't take that long. Just wanna make sure that we have the good temps for the concrete carrying.
Did you say that these will have cement collars then around?
Correct, it'll be like concrete box outs within the asphalt. Yep.
How many are we talking? Do you have a?
Ten of them on this estimate, yep. So, um, in conversation with Andrew, we decided we could work on just kind of a yearly type deal. Uh, knock, knock about ten of them off every year, so in about three years, we'd have those taken care of.
So if this is for twenty-twenty-six, why are we budgeting or putting this in our payment now versus just waiting until spring of twenty?
My recommendation is that we lock in the price right now. Um, as noted too, if we do have some of those warm spells where that contractor may be looking for some additional work to do, this is a smaller project that can be done with a, call it skeleton crew. Uh, so if someone's looking for a few extra hours at the end of the year, they'd be able to jump in. Uh, generally, see, as we wait until the spring, some of those workloads get increased. Um, some of those prices inevitably go up as well too. So, um, based on getting these this fall, my recommendation would be to move forward if you guys are looking at moving forward with this, um, to have it completed.
So we just need a supplement if we get done with twenty-twenty-five here?
Yeah, no, I, I was, I would actually ask them to not start in twenty-twenty-five.
And I guess if we're, yep, and we can make that request within there, they do have a, you know, noted that it's, you know, planned on twenty-twenty-six pricing. So if that's the case, we would ask them to hold off until, uh, the spring. Uh, but even so, uh, based on your question, Commissioner.
They can bill us until twenty-six, would work too, correct? I mean, if they're, technically, yeah. If I was in that business, I might say, yeah, January, January fifth.
Correct, yep, yep.
I'll make a motion over there.
I make a motion, uh, a second year motion if you add, add ten more to it in twenty-twenty-six. I just wanna go back up the street. What I wanna do.
We targeted Third and Cedar with this one?
Yes, Third and Cedar.
Is there another street in particular you would wanna try to target later in twenty-twenty-six? Depending on how this project goes and what sales tax looks like next year?
I would, I would think the schools. The grade school and the high school.
Maybe we can, yeah, maybe we can get to that map.
Cedar and Main, I think. Cedar and Main are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we doing the school reconstruction in front of the elementary school in twenty-six?
Hopefully, yeah.
Cedar and Third were, I mean, I totally agree moving the school up, but is Cedar or Third on the agenda to do in twenty-twenty-six? That we're not doing it for a year and then?
No, no.
With our next street.
That's, that's what we looked at. Uh, we're working on pavement management plan right now. Um, so I would anticipate probably the second meeting in December, we'll be able to give you guys a good report out on what we're looking at for the next three projects that are coming down the pipeline.
Oh, we are doing, planning on doing one in twenty-seven?
Uh, twenty-six.
Twenty-six is cool.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that we continue to do some sort of street maintenance along the way. In all reality, uh, the pavement management plan looks pretty good right now. Uh, what I would see a project in twenty-twenty-seven geared towards is more utility-driven than street-driven. So that's where we'd have some of those. If we go back on that capital improvement plan, I don't recall off the top of my head what we had identified in twenty-twenty-seven fall, but I can definitely follow up with you on that. But to your point, that's where we did look at a little bit on some of these, understanding, you know, some of that cost investment that we don't wanna go around the next year and completely tear everything up. So we'll make sure we keep that in mind.
But pavement management, I can show that Third Street's pavement isn't nearly bad.
The Third Street is up, I mean, I, I'm hearing you. The Third Street is also the street that we're getting continuously water breaks on.
Yeah. Corey, what do we have for water breaks on this year?
We haven't had too much this year, just up by the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the pool we had the one.
Jinxing it. We didn't have one on Third this year.
That, that Christmas or whenever we had, we had years ago.
It was, our number one priority was Cedar. And then it went to Third Street because of the water main break.
That's when Chris and Jordan were still here. And I'm fine with it, I just don't wanna do, I just don't wanna do a manhole and a year later we're tearing up the whole street.
Yep, I completely understand and hear you. I would say these manholes.
So buy ten more?
Yep.
Now, I make a motion that we go through with this and add five to ten more in twenty-twenty-six. Which one do you have?
So we have a motion.
Yeah, we need to resend the first motion.
Okay.
Oh, resend Lou.
Okay, got it?
You seconded it?
Got it?
Yep.
Okay, you can call roll.
Commissioners Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Mayor Leunstrum.
Aye.
Before you sit down, and talk to Andrew, but last time we, we talked about scraping Fifth Street and Dakota Street. And maybe Andrew said you were too, and hopefully it's not too late. I'd like to get a code on what they did on eighteen, the grating and taping, if that's what they call it.
Yep.
To see what that costs, because I would think that'd be really permanent.
Yeah, I mean, how long is that stuff on eighteen since the original?
Or they had to redo that? No, but.
I'll follow up on that.
It's not too late to check into it?
It's never too late.
They haven't started yet.
Thank you.
You gonna stand here for the next one too?
Figured you'd ask me too, so I'll stay here.
Justin has, yeah, with I S G submitted a community center engagement proposal. The proposal outlines the scope of services, compensation and additional services. Oh, is that the right one? Yeah, yeah. For, for the community center project, public engagement proposal. So Justin, you, you handed us a proposal?
I'll take it away. Try to keep this proposal pretty simple based on some of the conversation that you guys had. I'm in dialogue in previous meetings. So the premise of the proposal is going to be a three step meeting process of community engagement, public engagement to get feedback on what a future community center would look like. So this process is really taking, call it a ten thousand look view, and honing us in to where we feel comfortable on a concept and a cost to move forward with the project. It's going to provide some clarity. It's going to be a very open process through the aspects. ISG will facilitate all these meetings. Our ask to the commission is to have involvement with it to help get some of your guys' constituents there and talk about the project. So when we look at each of these public meetings, we'll do everything from postcards to get out to all the residents, send those out. That way they know when the meetings are, what the agenda of that meeting is. Follow up with you guys if there's any social media posts that we need to do to help get some of that as well. The meeting number one's going to be very high level, where we start looking at some of those amenities and locations. Once we get to that meeting number two, it's where we're going to start getting some architectural floor plans put together. That way we can get more comments in there, get that site even honed down even more. That meeting number three is where we plan to present some three D renderings. That way it gives a real life feel of what that building could look like on the site with some potential cost estimates as well. So all in all, this is really just helping pull everything in together to understand what kind of project we can have. That way we can go forward with those next steps. We anticipate this process taking about three months. Ideally, you would like to have that first meeting potentially in that December timeframe before Christmas, before the holidays get too busy. After that, we'd allow our team to take a little bit of time through the holidays and then probably late January, have that second meeting. And then follow up in February for the third meeting. That timeline can vary based on your guys' availability and feedback as well. But that's what we're proposing. So here to address any questions that you guys may have on the scope of services.
I'm sorry if I missed, but you have like a project landing page?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. So we also understand some people may not be able to come to those meetings. And so we do have a project landing page that does give information on it. Provide some surveys on there. That way we can get feedback through the online mechanism as well. So our meeting facilitation team has a lot of resources at hand that they'll like to implement. But one of those best ways is that in person conversation that we can get from folks.
Do you have any questions for Justin?
I think I have more, but a couple of questions directed for Andrew or Tiffany. So some of the responses that we had on the community letter where that they thought that the city has already put too much money into the community center. I'm, I'm pro community center. So my question is, can this be paid for by the funds that have already been raised? This portion be paid by those funds?
That's not a bad question.
And then later on, when we get this solid plan and we get people on the board, we can get, then we can start rolling in some, perhaps hopefully if we get the community on board more.
I can, I certainly asked the committee, you know, some of their dollars were most definitely earmarked for construction itself, but I think a lot of them were more towards the effort. Whether or not that was construction or design law.
I feel like this is, this is a smaller, you know, a smaller number that could maybe be doable with the money raised versus saying, you know, the big number to build a building, which the city could probably be better at.
They had, I mean, they had roughly a, a million dollars raised or plunged. So I would think that enough of that would be donated in a broad enough way that could be utilized for this effort if there.
That's just my thoughts, you know, to try to use the money that's already been raised for this portion, get the community on board so that when we bring it to the public to say, hey, we're going to build something, we, we've got more of the excitement built and we can use the money to build something. If that makes any sense at all.
I'm drafting, but would you want to pass tonight and have us ask them in the meantime or delay tonight?
Me personally, I say we, one of the ways it needs to get paid, I'm good with this. It just, we can ask if they can pay for it. If not, city pays for it, whatever. But also the terms and conditions that we're going to have to.
Yeah, what I would recommend with this one too, we work with a standard plan contract with EJ CDC. Like we're doing with water rate study. I think that gets a little bit more specific from my terms with what we're proposing here. So the just general terms and conditions.
So mine, mine would also be to revise it to.
Yep.
And revise the terms and conditions.
With all proposals that I will ever put in front of you guys, there is a caveat, general terms and conditions or standard EJ CDC planning document contract. I have been working with Larry on that too, and I think we're on the same page with that. So with any motion there, I think we'll just go forward with understanding that you guys approve, if you guys do approve it. But that's contingent on contracts executed between city and ISG.
I'll second Sarah's motion.
Just so people would know, the proposal for this, the compensation for this proposal is fifteen thousand dollars. So.
So and then then my approval is, then my motion is to make sure that the city attorney also approves on the contract. I want to make sure that's.
And yeah, we'll talk to the committee then.
I don't think you can make them because right now that's not sending money.
Right, yeah, it's.
Right, that's why I said.
It's an ask.
Can ask.
And if they say yes, we would have to be paying the bill and having them reimburse us anyway.
Sure. Okay. I can make that in my motion.
Okay, you want to repeat that motion so everybody's clear on that?
So how should you approve? On the caveat that Andrew asked, we can get reimbursed for this, just for this little bit here. Also based on the approval of the city attorney. Right?
You, did you second? You second?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Commissioners Carlson, aye. York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Mary Lance Strom.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Justin.
Thank you, guys.
So next on the agenda is a grant form for pre-application process for SF four twenty four. Aaron, you're, you're here? Yeah, Aaron, you're here. He submitted an application for federal assistance form. And you know what? This all needs to explain because this is all Greek to me.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
To the next three items?
Yeah, yeah. This is HIJ. All three items are kind of all together. Here, I'm Aaron Storm with KLJ Engineering and especially H and I, they go together. And this is what's called a pre-application. And it's considered the planning for fiscal year twenty twenty six. So this isn't a grant app and it's not coming with any, any project, like we're not starting an applicant, or we're not starting an agreement for, for any work. This is just the FAA's planning process for next year. So it's just forms to sign and and then J is actually no, excuse me, no project on that grant type, which is called AIP. Airport, airport improvement project is what AIP stands for. And then IIJA, AIG is, is a, is another secondary grant program through FAA. So we're just, we're just planning for one grant, which is the, the IIJA AIG grant number twenty. And number twenty means the twentieth grant of all the, all the cycle of FAA grants that the airports received. So there's no, and then the grant itself, the final grant app will be around March, April timeframe of twenty twenty six. So this is just a whole planning document. So I have no, I have no agreement in front of you. It's just a form for planning that the FAA needs.
Do you have any questions for him?
No, no, no dollars assigned yet, but it is kind of just setting it up for a project that will, right now it's estimated around, it's, so what it is, so what the project is going to be is, and it's following the capital improvement project for the airport. It's going to be putting a fuel system payment processing equipment onto the existing fuel tank and maybe even adding a second fuel tank. But we haven't scoped the full project yet, so.
Okay.
I'll be up here next time for scoping, you know, I'll have a scope and an agreement for starting design if we go forward.
Okay.
But no money yet. Yeah, we're not, we're not signing any agreements right now tonight. This is just a, a planning document that the FAA needs to see.
Okay.
Do we have a dollar amount for HI or J for the grant?
Yeah.
I was on the board.
Yep.
There and it's brought up before.
Yeah.
How many of these, if we get these grants?
The total, the total project cost would be about a hundred and fifty thousand for design, equipment and installation. That's what the rough estimate is right now. And then ninety-five percent would be covered by the FAA. Two and a half percent would be covered by the state DOT. And then two and a half percent would be covered by the city of Camden. And that would be when we, when you sign a grant in twenty twenty six. I'd be coming to you around the March or April timeframe for next year. And that, and then you'd, you'd be reviewing the, the scope of the project at that point. So I, I don't have a drafted scope. This is just a, a planned destin, it's a preliminary cost estimate for what, what the project could be.
We approve these three. It's giving you the right to do what, to where and stop where.
It's a.
I mean, that twenty dollar carrot is hanging, that twenty year carrot's hanging out here again. That if, if we would close because the airport ain't using no more. Yep, it sounds great that the city only has to come up with two and a half percent now, but if we ain't open in twenty years.
Yeah, for fiscal.
For some reason, we are, we are back up there to own that, to pay that hundred and fifty thousand dollars back again.
Right, right. For, for this grant twenty planning process, you're not on the hook for anything. You can decide not to submit the final grant, which would be, the deadline for the final grant will be in the spring of twenty twenty six. So we're actually not doing anything for work yet on this project. It's just a planning. It's just saying you have a capital improvement list and it's just saying that we're going to, we're, that we're expecting to move into the next project. So that's what the, that's what the FAA has forms for. Just to plan, just to, just to have a, an okay that they can start putting it in their books, but they're not actually going to, we're not actually signing a grant. So no work will be done until next spring, if we want to go forward with this project.
So like the board, the board that I'm on and Andrew's on or they're because of the administrator. We can do this without knowing where we're heading with those meetings that we're having currently like we have on Thursday. Isn't that the big picture of the future of the airport that we're doing?
Can you rephrase your question? I'm not sure if I get what you mean.
He's asking how this, this works with the, the.
The planning.
Master plan.
Airport master plan. So yeah, the airport master plan project, we are under grant for twenty twenty five, and it'll extend, like the final documents will, will finish sometime next year. But this project isn't tied to the master plan. The master plan would be creating, you know, a growth plan. And this will just be a project that's not really tied to master planning because there's already an existing fuel tank. It does not, it's a manual process for taking payment for, for fuel transactions. This will be making it an electronic form for paying at the pump. And then the potential for a second pump or second, yeah, tank and, and pump dispenser.
So right now, we can only sell fuel if someone is there?
No, there's a process for the people that are, the people that are tenants, write it down, you know, write down their fuel. Consume, or, you know, there's a dial on the tank and they just keep a manual tracking system, so.
So if someone's just flying through and hoping to fuel up, this is, they wouldn't need somebody to be there?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this would.
This would really help you. This could have, yeah, this could help increase fuel sales by, by catching anybody that's, yeah, that needs to fuel up when they're not.
And not.
When nobody's there to take the transaction and, yeah.
Paul, you don't sell airport fuel or airline fuel, do you?
My insurance company wouldn't let me sell. Because of liability. Could I get it? Yes.
Can I make a motion for all three at one time or do I have to do it individually?
Individually, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve H.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, you can call roll on that.
Commissioners York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
Mary Lance Strom.
Aye. Now, the next one. Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve five.
Second.
Okay, you can call roll.
Commissioners Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Aye. And for J.
I'll make a motion to approve J. Second. Commissioners Piggers.
Aye.
Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Mary Lance Strom.
Aye. Okay, that concludes all we have on the agenda.
Yes, we have exec, okay, there are two speakers.
So we will transition to dialogue first before we go into executive session. Chris, do you have anything?
I don't believe I do.
Sarah?
I can't think of anything.
Jackie? Paul?
Streets, I see quite a few out there. I don't know if we can, I'm not going to speak if we got location flags or whatever, but I see a lot on the curbs that, you know, landowner themselves did it or we get some, but snow season's about here. If you're worried about your curb getting cloud, get some four foot sticks, sticks up along the curb.
Okay, I don't have anything. You have anything, Andrew? Okay, I don't have anything. Do you have anything, Andrew?
No, ma'am.
Okay, who's going for executive?
Motion.
Call roll.
Commissioners Carlson.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Garbers.
Aye.
Piggers.
Aye.
Mayor Leinster.
Aye. Now an executive session?
No comment yet. If somebody asked, why does it look so weird tonight?
Or does it look funny?
Well, it looks different.
Anticipating in the action.
Because of that split screen.
Anticipating in the action afterwards.
No, sir.
No.
Yeah, because it will be like, yeah.
It had split screen or picked up.